And it is my understanding that as the agenda goes forward, they will be making their presentation.
I guess as part of the discussion, just for the city council's information, so that before we get into the actual fire department budget, we will have the fire commission and fire chief making a presentation this evening. And I guess, Your Honor, just trying to let us know once the presentation is finished, how do we want to proceed to -- oh, how you doing, Mayor?
Hi, sorry about that. apologize for being late.
I certainly, I think the mayor heard you, and I would assume he'll run the show after the presentation.
Okay. I guess what I'd turn to is the fire chief and the commissioners.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, city councillors, Mr. Mahenko, this is the presentation for the fiscal year '07, fire department budget. We saw in the last public session, ours is a performance-based budget. We talked about different strategies, and the first one is maintaining a safe work environment. Our theme is chief officers in the country is that everyone goes home. I mentioned that everybody on their shift, our mission is to make sure that they go home in better shape than they showed up that morning. We have over, still have over 100 firefighter deaths annually across the country, thousands more injured. And when you hear me refer to NFPA standards, this is where the standards come from. The standards are written, just much like laws in this country, they're written when tragedy happens, when somebody dies. Such as NFPA 1500, the standard on firefighter safety and health. NFPA 1710, the standard on deployment and standard of coverage. We refer to those again and again to try to educate the council and the public as to why we staff the fire department and maintain the policies that we do. And part of that strategy has been pre-planning programs, health and safety. You see the, we talked about the mobile data terminals and the apparatus, you can see that on the screen. We talk about the firefighter safety issues such as the traffic vests that they have to wear anytime they're working anywhere near moving vehicles. And communications policy. And again, the pictures you see are actual incidents from this year. This is the Broad Street fire in October. With communications, we've received hundreds of thousands of dollars in mobile radios through Homeland Security grant for all of the department apparatus and ambulances. We have about $120,000 worth of portable radios paid for by Homeland Security that should be delivered next week. It's about 58 radios. As mentioned, we do have a 33-foot fireboat coming through a Homeland Security grant of $350,000, and that again is a no-match grant paid to the city by Homeland Security. We've also finished a project for technical rescue equipment and a trailer to the tune of $42,000, again, a no-match grant by Homeland Security. We've also increased the app, or updated the apparatus fleet such as the new ladder two that you see in the pictures through the capital improvement program, and also the gear washer extractor and dryer at Station 1. Strategy two is aggressively provide effective life and building safety services to all of our customers. And I've received many questions recently as to why this is such a high priority for the fire department. We are currently with one person in the fire prevention office, currently accomplishing only half of the place of assembly permits in the city that are required annually. And as you know, we have the highest per capita restaurant and bars of any city in the state. We have no dedicated formal injury prevention plan for the community to address public education in our schools, healthcare facilities, and our elderly housing community. Since January of 2000, there's only been one person in the fire prevention bureau that's historically been a two-person office. As I mentioned before, fire prevention is the hardest thing for me to quantify to you in dollars and cents. I cannot tell you how much property was saved or how many injuries did not happen because the population knew what to do in the event of an emergency. That an elderly woman knew what to do with the burning pot on the stove, the grease fire on the stove. That a child knew what to do when the smoke detectors went off because he learned it in school. I cannot tell you how many injuries were prevented. What we do have is an instance that was published in the Northeast Municipal Forum of the fire in West Warwick Road Island, the Station nightclub fire. On February 20th, 2003, where 100 people died and over 200 were injured. In the aftermath of the fire, the town is facing litigation and potential liability between $500 million and $1 billion. And as the town manager states, there's an interesting gap between those who are really to blame and the deep pockets who will foot the bill. Although I cannot tell you how many injuries or dollars and property dollars are saved, I can tell you the liability to the community by, for us not getting out and doing the inspections and making sure that all of those places of assembly are permitted and safe. And that requires annual inspections and follow-up inspections, such as the time that we all went out at midnight and did spot inspections of the, all the bars and restaurants downtown and found some overcrowding issues and took care of them then. Fire safety has a lot to do with fire safety, fire prevention. Public education, being in the schools, talking to the kids, new construction plan, reviews and inspections, and you see how much construction is going on in the city. And fire alarm testing and drills and all the other stuff that we have to do is a tremendous responsibility for one person to do, and all this activity does not count the in-service inspections that our on-duty companies do. Strategy three, provide an effective response to all fire, emergency medical, and special hazard incidents, whether natural or man-made. We do that to national standards, resource distribution, making sure we're properly staffed, and effective training and state-of-the-art equipment. We conducted live fire training off of Coach Road with assets provided by the Hampshire Fire Academy at no charge to the city. You see commercial building ventilation at the Omni Mall building, and hybrid vehicle training at Portsmouth Toyota. All of this is done on duty with no extra cost to taxpayers. Some other updates that we've been working on, the cardiac monitors upgrade that you see in the capital improvement plan, District 3 engine, which is now on order and should arrive in July, and District 2 station planning and design that some of the city councils are working on that fire station, substation committee. Some of our activity for calendar year 2005, and our activity statistics go on a calendar year. 2,270 fire service calls. And just to give you some examples of those and why it's important to have the staffing that we do. We had a fire in the floor of the Marcus Street block by the gaslight at 2:00 in the morning. This fire could have and probably should have taken the whole block, but because of the quick response from our crews, it maintained a fire. It continued to be just a fire in the floor and was held in check. Second more court apartments. Fire was kept to the apartment of origin, and during the incident, we had a neighborhood, neighbors dispute, and the resident next door collapsed on his front lawn. We had a cardiac incident going at the same time of the fire. We handled both of those admirably. That was on a Sunday afternoon. Miller Avenue fire started by a contractor welding pipes. Started a fire in an old balloon frame Victorian. Fire started in the basement, it raced all the way up to the attic. Because of the quick response from the crews, and this again was the middle of the day, they were able to head off that fire and keep it inside the walls, providing minimum damage, and the occupants were able to move back in that afternoon. The Madison Street fire that you see pictured happened at 5:00 in the morning on a Sunday morning. We arrived to find two buildings fully involved. Third building was not involved, but by the time we were done, it was not damaged, was unscathed, and they were able to maintain that building and keep on going with their construction. Broad Street, which is also pictured, was an early afternoon fire. Again, this was in a room and contents in the upper floors, and that again was contained in the area of origin. And just this morning at 4:00 in the morning, at Stokeroff Apartments, an apartment fire which started on the third floor decking climbed up the walls into the attic, and it was contained to the apartment of origin and the attic, and all of those occupants were back in by 5:00, and we were under control by 4:30. It's only because we're responding from the station locations that we have with the proper equipment, the proper staffing, and because it was a night shift, there was 14 firefighters on, four firefighters at that station, they were able to get there and do a quick attack and save the building and do what they needed to do. No injuries, no other damage. The other side of what we do is emergency medical services. It's about 70% of what we do. 2,578 EMS calls in calendar year 2005, and they range from anything from a fall to a severe motor vehicle accident, which you see in the pictures here. One of the examples I'd like to share with you is on March 4th of this year, a 49-year-old man collapsed outside a restaurant on Conger Street. He walked out of Jumping J's Fish Cafe and collapsed on the street. He was pulseless and breathless. He was not breathing. He was, for all clinical purposes, dead. Station 1 crews were on scene providing advanced life support in less than three minutes. The paramedics provided cardiac defibrillation, oxygen-enriched ventilations, shocked his heart back to a sustaining rhythm. They provided IV therapy and intubated his airway, ensuring adequate perfusion of oxygen into his blood. Cardiac medications ensured a normal heart rate, and on March 22nd, he was discharged from Portsmouth Hospital. That is a true sad. Future challenges for the fire department, it's just not just fire and EMS. We're called anything that another agency cannot handle. Bioterrorism, hazardous materials. What we're planning for now is all hazard emergency operations plan and flu pandemic planning. Residential and retail growth in District 2 is continuing. Now we have more apartment buildings coming in behind Ralph's Truck Sales and other development. Continued development of downtown Northern Pier and the Islington Street Quarter. Our waterfront and maritime responsibilities. Community fire safety and injury prevention programs, so are we getting all of our population educated. And place of assembly permitting. Just some highlights on these, we had a successful mass inoculation clinic in November. We updated our local emergency operations plan to emergency support function-based, adopted hazard mitigation plan. We have ongoing pandemic planning. We work with the city's public health coordinator to do all of it, and we also head up the regional planning team. As far as the annual budget for fiscal year 2007, when making this budget, we were trying to figure out how to get 15 personnel per shift. We realized it's to be a tremendous hit to the budget, a tremendous increase. Currently, we have 13 minimum staffing during the day, 14 at night. How do we get to 1414 to keep four men minimum at that Station 2? That presented us with a 9.7% overall budget. If we increase maximum staffing to 15 personnel without reducing overtime, it's a 14.3% increase. And that doesn't include the overtime for full coverage. We're going to hire personnel, and there isn't the overtime that goes with them to keep it at that staffing. We haven't gained anything operationally. Which leads us to how we arrived at this year's budget. If you remember back to the Joint Budget Committee, it was realized that our fixed costs would probably be around 7%. The fire department aimed for that recommended number. Trimming back on some expenses, we realized that we could also fund the fire inspector captain position without going too far off the 7% projection. To get that fire prevention office back to two people. So it includes that position, and also includes our contractual obligations such as step increases, health insurance, workers' compensation, and our increasing energy costs. The fire department enjoys state-of-the-art equipment, training, and it's all possible through support of our fire commission, the city manager, John Mahenko, and the support of the city council. And I'd like to thank you for your support of the fire department, and I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you have.
Very good. One thing, and I apologize again for being a few minutes late, and I apologize if anything I say has been said already at the outset tonight. One thing I would say, and again, I don't want to speak for all councillors necessarily, and I'm sure if somebody disagrees, they'll tell me, is you've seen it, you've heard it, we're trying to balance the real needs that you've described, Chief, very well. And I would argue very accurately with obvious constraints in terms of what taxpayers can bring to the table for FY07 and beyond. And that's not atypical. That's pretty normal. Every year, that's our primary challenge. And it's not just fires, it's going to be with all departments. So certainly, that's what we're balancing, those are the competing interests here. One thing I would say is, as any questions that I, I suspect any questions that will get asked tonight, any questions I ask, should not be implied, I think, to take as, anything you've described is not important or not providing value. It's just a matter of, at times, we may have to decide what things are most critical versus less critical, not to imply that one is important and one is less not important at all. But I think that's the spirit in which we're asking questions. But one thing I would say in conclusion is that in general, as I said the last few years, and I think most councillors agree, that the fire department has done a generally very good job of coming in with figures that reflect needs and being able to differentiate by and large needs as compared to wants. And I think that's something that sometimes it's easy for us to mention a department when they don't necessarily do that as well, but it's important to note it when a department does do that well. And over the last several years, at least the short time I've been around, that's something that I've noticed, and I think most councillors feel that way as well. So with that said, that's sort of a little bit of context or backdrop, most of which you're probably familiar with before I said any of it, but we'll open it up, and I saw Councilor Panalakis, I saw your hand raised.
Yeah, I'd like to ask you why you need to put on a captain as a fire inspector, which would be between $80,000 and $90,000. I'm curious that that would almost take, give you two firefighters. I was curious to why it has to be a captain.
The reason it's at the captain's level is to try to get some of our interior officers interested in going after the job. It would be a five-day-a-week job with no overtime. Their earning potential would be much less. So to make it worth someone's while to work five days a week, to dedicate their time to prevention, to get them off the line, and to have somebody that has the education and the experience and the desire to do that job, whether we're hiring it from in-house or from outside, we're going to need to have a competitive salary to draw somebody in to take that position.
And a second question, does everyone have cell phones on the fire department that they charge to you?
No, ma'am.
How come your cell phones are $14,000?
I don't believe we've spent that, the...
Well, that's what's in the budget for the next year.
Yeah, the cell phones, we have, we are cell phones to all the ambulances, the chief officers, and the officers of the department have cell phones. Basically, the next tells that they use it to communicate more effectively than the radio waves, but that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Whitehouse.
To follow up on what Laura just stated in reference to this new fire prevention officer. You know, as I look at the personnel, top key people, we have a fire chief, we have an assistant fire chief, we have a deputy fire chief, and now we want to create a fire prevention officer. You know, fast calculations, that's probably over $400,000 in salaries and benefits. What other department this size has those type of key personnel making that type of salary? I mean, we'll forget the salary, but those four type of personnel in their department. Does Rochester, Dover...
Yeah, actually, we are extremely light when it comes to office personnel and administrative staff. If you look to departments around us such as Dover and Rochester, you will find tremendous differences in the number of five-day-a-week office staff that they have.
Well, I'm just referring to those top key people.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Now, the salary for the fire prevention is a line item of about, what, $85,000?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Well, if I might, Chief, probably the base salary is there as a captain's salary, and there are steps depending on what happens, depending on if somebody's hired in, if there's a captain that chooses to take the position, is hired in at a higher level, or if a captain is, or if somebody is promoted to captain, then it will be at the step one. I think that when you take the base salary with the captain, the base salary is $59,000, I think it is, and if you add in, depending if the person has a family plan and all those things, and taking all that into consideration, you're probably talking about $86,000. I mean, it can go, it can go a lot higher than that depending on, you know, what the benefit, you know, if the person is a top, top step captain, it can be higher than that, it could be $90,000. But, so with benefits, about $86,000, I would say.
Counselor?
Oh, seven for captains is 64, almost $65,000.
Right, Counselor, and I think just, and as I indicated, that's the top step if I'm, if that is, so if, let's say, for example, Counselor, the, there is a, an officer, there is a non-ranking officer that basically gets promoted to the captain or the lieutenant, then they will come in at either step one or a step, probably step two, I would suspect. Would it be step one? So they would come in at step one, so that would be at $59,000, and then they would move up the steps. But if there's a captain that's there now and chooses to apply for the prevention officer, and they're at the top step, then it would be about $66,000.
I can assure you that...
Before benefits.
Before benefits, correct. And with benefits, about $86,000, and depending on what plans they're in and all that type of stuff.
I would expect to have one of my junior lieutenants interested in this, and certainly none of my captains would be, it would be a tremendous cut in paper, though.
So we're probably looking at, Counselor, we're probably looking at, with benefits, about $86,000.
I would like to say, too, this is not a new position. Historically, this department has always had two people in the fire prevention office, and they at that time were strained, and we have not been able to do that in the last few years, quite a few years, because of budgetary, and that's where we could put more men on the floor and get to places. So historically, they have had two, and area departments in this area do have two, and we would like to continue that along so we can maintain and keep what we have going out there with the new construction and permits and what have you. One man is really running hard to keep up at half-speed right now.
Take other questions or comments going around the table here. Assistant Mayor.
I have a question for the chief. One of the objectives is to improve the ISO rating from four to two. That's the insurance group that rates our responses and our various data. You know, what gets you to a two in terms of, for example, response times, if you know?
What would get us a higher ISO evaluation would be, they said we needed a minimum staffing of 18 firefighters per shift, so we could have two fully manned ladder trucks for a city this size.
So it's staffing, not response time?
It's a combination of both. Usually, cities like Cambridge that have a Class 1 fire department, in LA, they have a Class 1 fire department, every two blocks has a fire station. We could never fall into that because of our layout, but with the stations that we have, in addition to the 18 personnel per shift, manning two ladder trucks, we would move our ISO rating up.
If I could follow up, the component of it that might involve response time, where would the difference be between, say, where we are currently in terms of average response time and where we would need to be to get, kind of, work our way towards the improved rating?
It's a complex issue. They look at the land miles as well as population, and your shift staffing, and like, we have a Quint Concept truck at Station 2. It's a ladder truck, it's also an engine, that only gives us half credit because it's not a fully-staffed ladder and a fully-staffed engine in that station, which is what they want to see. They also would like to see two more stations for a city this size, and we realize that that's probably not going to be possible. In the ideal situation, there is a couple more stations, there's at least 18 people on a shift, and we realize that. We realize we will probably never get to that 18, which is, which would meet NFPA 1710 to the ladder, four-man engines, four-man ladders, and two men on the ambulance. We realize that's a huge hit and a huge budget issue. That is why we've been trying to get to 15, which gives us five, five, and five. That's three men on the engine, two men in the ambulance at both sta, at all three stations. We do that during storm coverage, we do it during special events, just market squares, so the apparatus does not have to travel between districts. That's ideal staffing. If the ambulance is running with the engine and we do meet NFPA 1710, and that's why I try to get to that, that area. Hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Assistant Mayor?
Do you know whether we're, for example, Dover, Rochester, Exeter stack up in terms of their ISO rating?
I believe they're lower than us. I couldn't tell you exactly. I know that they're, have far less staff than we do. As far as line positions, they have increased office staff. They have at least two or three in their prevention offices and deputies and assistant chiefs.
Thank you.
I was just going to comment, I know Dover is like 56 square miles of land compared to Portsmouth, and they have just two fire stations in the whole city.
Correct. And they have, I believe, nine people on a shift.
I think Rochester is even less than that. And area-wise, Rochester is a large city, too.
Yes, it is.
So it doesn't matter how many they have in the office, they don't have the people out there to put out the fire.
Okay. Counselor Panalakis, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, Chris, you keep, excuse me, Chief, you keep mentioning a NFP or whatever it is. Who are these people?
National Fire Protection Association.
And who are they made up of?
Oh, there's several...
Hired firefighters?
Oh, there's industry professionals, some firefighters, some fire chiefs, sprinkler companies, anybody that's involved in the fire service in some way makes up those technical committees to advise the NFPA.
Okay. Second question is, why should we have to account to them? Why aren't we looking out for just what is needed in our city?
Well, it's both. I wouldn't recommend it to you if it wasn't needed in our city, and the issue becomes, there are nationally recognized standards for what the fire department should be doing. Should we not be able to successfully rescue civilians or, God forbid, kill one of our own people, the very first thing the court's going to do is hold the NFPA standard and say, "Why didn't you follow it?" Because, no, it's not a law, no, it's not a required ordinance, but it is the Bible, and it's going to come up in court, and that's the standard we're going to be held liable to if something happens. So it's very serious to us.
Okay. Second question is, you have here part-time maintenance for $28,000 and part-time alarm maintenance for another $22,000. Are them done by people in the department, or are they done on the outside?
Well, it depends on the task. We should save a tremendous amount of money on oil changes, inspections, light bulb changes, minor repairs by paying somebody $20 an hour in-house as opposed to the labor shop $75, $80 an hour. Should it be brake repairs, pump repairs, major stuff like that, that goes out to a certified mechanic in a repair shop to take the liability off of the city. If everything was farmed out, our truck maintenance budget would be over $100,000.
Don't we have certified mechanics in the city level?
May I speak to that, Your Honor? That is a good question, Counselor, but one thing you have to understand with regards to fire apparatus, it's really a specialty. And quite frankly, we would probably, we would have to, we could probably do it if we, if we had the right training for it. We have three mechanics, but again, it is a specialty, and it does have major OSHA standards that are associated with especially the ladder truck vehicles. I believe, Chief, how many times last, when we were on the replacement of the ladder?
I'm not talking about doing brakes, doing those things at a high maintenance. I'm talking about doing the oil changes and things like that.
We could take a look at that.
If that, I mean, that would give you, almost give you another firefighter.
Well, you'd still need those positions, and it has been tried in other municipalities where you have mechanics that are normally used to working on lawnmowers and dump trucks and put them on fire trucks, and it doesn't work out.
But we could take a look at it. Certainly, certainly worth looking at, and the chief and I will take a look at that.
I mean, it's something that is done to the trucks at Flower Road, to the ones that pick people up and whatnot, so I mean, I, I just see, I see that amount in there, and it would almost give you another firefighter. And it's part-time, and it's a salary that somebody is getting within the department to add to his...
It's important to understand how those positions got started. We have our fire alarm division that handles all of our fire alarm, aerial wires for the schools, all the stuff that needs to be done out there on the poles. We have our firefighters that work part-time doing the mechanics. Those firefighters, it's a sidebar agreement with the union, they do not make their overtime rate. Those firefighters are making $37 or $40 an hour in overtime rate and work for 12, 18, 20 bucks an hour doing this part-time work. It's an asset to them, it's an asset to the department because I have immediate control over my maintenance crew and the fire alarm division, and they're working at a reduced rate. And that's where we, we don't overspend those accounts. If there's an issue with our budget, it's the part-time people that usually get trimmed first, not the chefs. So it's a minor amount of money when you look at the total budget for a tremendous service. Again, the shop labor rates are $75 or $80 an hour.
And again, I think, Your Honor, if I might, we can take a look at that, Counselor Panalakis. You know, I think it's worth looking at and exploring. We, you know, I don't think for this particular budget, we'll take a look at it...
In the future.
In, over the next few months, we'll take a look at it, and we'll certainly get a report back to the city council relative to that.
Counselor Whitehouse.
Chief, I'd like to talk about the 14 men per shift. How do we stand now? How many shifts have 14 men?
Every night shift. All shifts, all four shifts have 14 names on the roster. If everybody comes to work, there's nobody out on an earned time, there are 14 people 24 hours a day. If somebody calls in sick, well, I have sick leave anymore. If somebody takes an earned time day during the day during the week, we go down to 13, which means we do not fill that 14. Anybody less than 13, we fill it. At night, again, 14 names on the roster, man-for-man coverage, who's ever out gets replaced.
Now, this early morning fire you had this morning, did you have 14 men on?
Yes, sir, I did.
Was it a mutual aid call?
No, sir.
You have to handle it yourself?
Yes, sir.
There's a note, station... Was there no station coverage from any?
Well, it went to a working fire, so Kittery came over the bridge to sit in Station One until our recall crews came in. It's an interesting point that you ask, because we're on a night shift, and there was four people in that truck. They showed up in their four-to-five-minute timeframe with a driver and officer and two firefighters that were able to go to work. That's tremendous. As soon as you start getting below four, you have to realize what happens. One firefighter is driving that truck and responsible for operating the pump. Last night, he was operating the pump and the aerial ladder, two different locations on the truck, with an officer that's able to conduct the crews, and he had two guys on the line with him. We go down to three, that officer had, there's only two in the mix. So, that's why I have said, we need four people on the engines. Three is the minimum. I won't roll a truck out the door with two. It'll stay parked if all we have is two firefighters. That's where the cross-manning gets really, really dangerous. And when there's three people in that station, and most people don't realize this, is that that ambulance at Station Two is not manned, it's not in service. Should both of the city ambulances be busy, such as a major car accident, or they're out on different calls, and we could call for a third ambulance, and that, those crew will take that. It's fully licensed, it's in service, it's supplied. When they take that ambulance and go out, that ladder truck is out of service until they get back. That district has no fire protection, so.
How weighted that officer had to come from?
Station Two.
Oh, he was on duty?
Yeah.
Officer was on duty, he wasn't called in?
No, there were four people on duty last night at Station Two, and when the call came in at four sixteen, four people responded from Station Two. The other stations came in to back them up.
Just curious, what bridge did Kittery use?
I couldn't tell you. All I know is they're quick and they like to come over, so.
It's not very safe, you know. I know they do, but the memorial's not very safe.
Okay. Yep, Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. As much as I agree that the importance of having the additional fire prevention officer available, is it, and how long have we been without having a second person?
Since January first, two thousand.
Is it possible that that could be funded at the half a year? Is that something we can roll in, say, around the first of the year? Is it so that while we're getting through the construction period and bring them on there so that we can kind of hold line on budget? Would that put too much stress on the department, or is that something that could be worked out?
I think that's something to be worked out. I know that the City Manager suggested backing it back, and I know that, I understand the fiscal constraints. I also would offer that if we split that down the middle, the city funds it from January to July, it may take us a couple months, starting from July first, to get this person online, and then perhaps we could fund it from that point to January till we, January first date, when the city's portion kicks in.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor.
Thank you, Your Honor. In the years that I've been on the council, I don't think I've ever tried to tell the police commission, the fire commission, or any of the commissions and the top people in that department how they, what they needed, or how to spend the money that the council votes for. I think you're closer to that than I am. I wouldn't presume to tell you how many men you need. I only know that for the first time in my history in service, I have never heard so many comments from low, middle, and upper-in-class people as I have this time. Letters, phone calls, stop you on the street, in the supermarkets. There definitely is, finally has come to a point where I think the council might say, "You've all got good budgets, and I know you've cut it down as much as you can, and we'll vote for it." My sense is, that is not going to happen this time. I would hope that every department looks at budgeting this time with the reality that they're not going to come up with a budget that the council will buy. How much will they cut it? Well, that all depends on what kind of a budget you bring in that is acceptable, considering the amount of taxes that the people in this city can pay. It's not a good year, and I wished I hadn't give up a little earlier. You have to do what you have to do, and we get elected by the people who pay those taxes. We have to represent them. And I guess the only judgment we make is, how much of what you're asking for, the people can afford to pay for. And this year, I wouldn't quote a number, but I think that number has floated around, and I think it's a highly acceptable number for the people. If that is so, then it's acceptable to me as a counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Hines. Counselor Smith?
Thank you. Just to follow up on what Counselor Hines was saying, I've had a total of, and I've been saying this for a while, I'm up to seventy-six phone calls and letters and people stopping me. And of that, I've had one that has been in favor of a particular budget, and everyone else has been saying the same thing, "Hold the line." And I, in going through this budget, and since we are just working on the fire department tonight, I'll just speak to this one, is I think you've done a terrific job in holding the line. I really think that the fire department's budget is pretty tight, you know. I couldn't see anything in here that I found unreasonable by any means, and trust me, I've been looking. And that's why I have the, I asked a question, if we can possibly hold that one position to a half a year in an attempt to, again, overall constraint on the entire budget. I've even had some people come up to me and congratulate me for a promotion, but that's a different Ken Smith who is with the fire department. But I want to thank the fire department for coming in and keeping a budget that seems to be in line, and hearing the problems that we've had so forth, and being able to work with us in if we do have to cut that position out to a half a year. Because I, too, I agree that it's an important position. I think when you have fire prevention, as you said, you already stated, it goes a long way in stopping a lot of fires. It's helping children understand, you know, fire safety, and it's a position that's needed, especially with all the new construction, to make sure that the buildings are being maintained and built in the proper standard. And I just wanted to say thanks again for, I think, holding the line and doing the job that was already asked of you.
I see a few hands. Before we get to those, I think City Manager had a comment.
Just, Your Honor, I think for some housekeeping purposes, just to refer to the charter, so the city, there are some new city council members, just so that everybody knows that certainly there has been discussion relative to line items and things of that sort. It's very clear in the charter that the, the charter basically says, "The fire commission shall appoint such permanent firefighters, lieutenants, captains," and it goes on to talk about the various levels, "as they may deem necessary, subject to the approval of the city council." They, and again, it goes on to determine the size of the workforce and increase or decrease its size, subject to the approval of the city council. So the city council could literally say that, you know, when they approve this budget, they could say that we want to have a sworn force of, and whatever that number is at the end of the day. So I think it's important for the council to understand that because it really is a housekeeping issue more than a policy issue, just so that you're aware that under the charter, the commission actually physically interviews people and then makes that determination as to who they're going to hire based on the qualifications. The city council's responsibility is, they can tell you the number of people you can have in the operation. So under the charter, you have that clear determination to say, "This is the staffing level of sworn firefighters that we will allow you." It is the commission's responsibility, working with the chief, to determine the qualifications of the individual and to hire that. I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on what the charter said on that.
One thing, if I could, it's somewhat related, and trying to clean up a little bit in terms of, because eventually, not just tonight, but over the next few weeks, we're going to have similar discussions with three other, in three other meetings. And at the end of that, we're going to be the folks in charge of sewing it all together to come up with a package that gets key services done at a price that people can afford. But in terms of this department, and again, I urge any counselor that says you forgot something or you've, that's something that really shouldn't have been on the list, it seems from discussion amongst counselors, certainly listening to you this evening and just trying to take in information, the areas that different people will mention and say, "What about this area? What about that area?" in terms of ways to produce a service more efficiently, seem to fall into a couple of categories, and want to state it as such. One, and I'm not necessarily looking for comment on this, would deal with contractual-type issues. We had the study that was completed recently and presented, and by most accounts, in virtually all departments, it seems like there's some opportunities there to do what we do better at a price that, in a way that in the long term allows us to do it at a price we can afford. But I think also, virtually everybody who's looked at the issue would agree, that's not something that we're going to do a whole lot about in fiscal year 2007, because it is not, we're not in the midst of a negotiation at the moment for future contracts for departments. So, that's one that's certainly on the horizon, but for this budget, and that's something for the public at home as well, because you'll get feedback saying, "Can't we do XYZ in terms of contractual issues?" And the answer is, except for, and again, anybody can correct me if they disagree or if I'm factually inaccurate, there isn't a whole lot in the short term that we can do with that, but certainly we can be cognizant and thinking about it for the day in the not-so-distant future, when we do have to have that discussion. So that's one area, but that's not necessarily for FY '07. The second, and this is what got me thinking that the timing might be good to do it now, deals with staffing levels, and I'm not even just talking about fire, but also all departments. What is the appropriate amount of staff to do the job that's been, that the community wants to have done? What I'm hearing around the table this evening is I'm not hearing anybody in terms of the fire department now, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, saying that we need to be reducing the number of sworn personnel. I'm not hearing that, and I know that's not where I would be either. There's certainly discussion about, I know there's a desire to try to raise that number over time. I'm also not hearing a whole lot of discussion about that tonight either for FY '07, but it seems like that's one area that I'm not seeing a lot of disagreement on. But it's certainly an important part of the discussion. If somebody did disagree with that, this would probably be a good time to bring it up, either higher or lower for FY '07. The third area deals with the additional inspector position that has come up this evening, and I know that there's some that have been talking about doing it for full year, some half year, I think, Counselor Smith. I think one or two have said, "Maybe not this year, maybe sometime in the future, maybe not this year." That seems like one area that we're going to have to make a decision as a group. A fourth deals with overtime. We haven't really touched upon that too much. That has come up in separate conversations, and certainly the public, that's something that is a lightning rod for all departments, not just fire. So that's something that tends to come up, and probably something that we'll have to address before we get to the final budget figures in mid-June. One relative, very small number in the big picture of what is a, you know, roughly six million dollar budget, but something I wanted to ask about deals with utility costs. Very small number relative to some of the things I just mentioned, like staff. But I noticed that in terms of the percentage increase from '06 to proposed '07, understanding that energy costs are zooming up. It is a pretty large number, I think it's something like forty-four.
Yeah, the number goes up about forty-five percent from budgeted for FY '06 to '07, but I understand what the fire department, what all other departments, if I might, Your Honor, proceed. What, we're working with all the departments now, fire, schools, public works, because we, as I indicated earlier on to the Joint Budget Committee and Counselor Grasso, when she was chairing those, we talked about at length the issue of utilities. And we showed, we, at that time, we were looking at about a six-hundred-thousand-dollar shortfall within this fiscal year that we're making up, and I, in probably around November or so, sent out a memorandum to all departments, and they all indicated that they were going to cut back in various areas, and I believe the fire department has been able to do so as well, and I just wanted to note that. So when you look at the budget number for '06, it probably, they've made up within other parts of their budget about ten to twelve thousand dollars, because that number is not fifty-two thousand, it's probably more like sixty-four to sixty-six thousand. So they've made that up, and then they've included it in their fiscal '07 budget at a estimate of seventy-six thousand dollars. But I would say that there should be some recognition of the fact, the department heads early on in the, before the second quarter of the fiscal year ended, we started to chip in together to try to figure out how we're going to achieve making up those dollars. And, you know, quite frankly, what they've done is they've foregone different things they were going to do this year, and it depends on the various departments, what they've given up. So, but I just want everybody to be aware of that, because it is something that was made up within the department itself, and when you look at the increase, when you look from budgeted, budget it's forty-five percent, but they've been able to make it up within their '06 budget, and it's probably more like a twenty percent from the actual to '07.
So really, that, a lot of, not all, of course, but some of that difference reflects that the '06 number is not actually indicative of the amount of energy that was required, and if that was, that percentage would be much closer.
And the one thing, Your Honor, if I might just continue, for the public's information, as well as upstairs right now, the Sustainability Committee is meeting. One of the things that we did in the Finance Department, and Judy Belanger did with her staff, is we actually went through, and we didn't want to go, and we did not want to compare dollar, budget dollars to budget dollars. What we actually did is they physically have gone through and looked at kilowatt-hours and thermes and all those, so we actually have that all for, what, a two-year period, Judy?
Yes.
Two-year period. So, we now have a database that we can go from so that we can, so we actually can predict a lot better. Rather than trying to take from a budgeted number to a budgeted number, we actually can take the number of thermes or kilowatt-hours that have been used, and I think I sent all of you a copy of the energy report that we did. So these are some of the things we're doing in that area to evaluate, and quite frankly, when we told some of the people on the committee what we had available, they were quite happy so that they can look at it and see how we might be able to do better.
And really, over a period of years for all departments, I think we're really trying to look at the number of units used, because there's obviously a positive environmental impact and economic impact when we're able to do the same job for fewer units of energy, and so I think that is a big step towards getting us there. But I understand the difference, and hopefully, I don't know if others had a similar question, but it's much clearer to me, so. Counselor Grasso, and then Counselor Panalakis.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to commend the fire department on submitting a good budget. You've always done that in the past, and I really appreciate it. And I also noticed that the chief is always talking about safety, and not only safety for the people of Portsmouth, but he also has a high consideration for the safety of his own staff and his own firefighters, which I appreciate. I would like to see us somehow be able to fund that fire prevention officer this coming fiscal year, if not full-time, but to start to get it on board. I happen to be in the Walmart that is near where I live, and they're expanding and construction. I was looking around for something, and all of a sudden Deputy Griswold was there, and he was scurrying from one place to the other. The alarms were ringing at all the doors, you were testing them out, and you were going from one entrance to another to check out all the alarms, the noise, the flashes and everything, so it was quite a sight to see him. And I know that, that there's a lot of that going on, because as due to the expansion, every step has to be checked, and this was an example of only one store, and there's a lot of buildings going up, so that this has got to be happening all over the city. So if possible, I would be in favor of somehow working the figures so that we could get that person on board sometime this fiscal, coming fiscal year.
Thank you. And Counselor Panalakis?
I would like to see, number one, I don't want to see a captain become a fire inspector, because they're already under contracts, and we would have the same contract, they would have the contracts that would force us to do the same thing as they're doing now, at a higher pay and everything. I would like to see, which used to happen, Charlie Jones started out there as a firefighter or inspector in that department at the beginning, and George.
Pierce.
Pierce was the fire chief, deputy fire chief. He was in many fires as the chief was, and they worked together in that area. I think that it's a good idea for someone to be put on, but I wished it would not. I think that it's a good idea for, for someone to be put on, but I wished it would not be at such a high-paying start, a five-day-a-week job. That's quite a, quite a thing for someone to pick up, but I just can't see it. I, I do want to commend you on your budget. It's always been great, and you've always brought us in a good budget, and keep it at the lowest you can keep it, and the guys do very, very good work out of there. But that's my only reservation, is that I wish that you had started at a lower level, and someone that could work up through the ranks. So, that's my own opinion.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Whitehouse.
Chief, I'm going to change the subject a little bit, from personnel to, to an issue of your fireboat, your 35-foot fireboat you're going to be getting in August. Now, is that going to be fully equipped? That boat ready to go?
Yes, sir.
And you're going to keep the 23-footer?
No, sir.
So that's going into mothballs, right?
That's, that's failing fast. It's out of, it went out of service today, so.
Yes.
It won't make the mothballs.
Oh, okay. So there's going to be a cost factor, isn't it?
Go ahead.
I tried to find in the budget, you know, will it be a cost factor, this going from a 23-footer to a 35-footer, for, for more personnel, more training? I looked in the budget, I couldn't find a line item that refers to maybe advanced training, shipboard training, you left that blank. Also, fire contingency, that was left blank. Now, you know, there certainly must be a cost factor going to a 35-footer, fully equipped, ready to fight shipboard fires.
Well, the fire contingency line is when I come back and ask you for money, because I've run out. I haven't done that since I've taken over.
Yep.
Although it was the first thing I had to do as acting chief, but, anyway.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you. There is a, a cost associated with operating the boat, that's right now in, in the fire apparatus maintenance line. The new boat will be, the boat you're talking about is an 83 Seax with an outboard. It's a maintenance headache, it's out of the water for the cold months, it's shrink-wrapped behind Station 2, you might see it out there. It's a fair-weather boat. It's gas, tremendous amount of gas when it's out on the water. The new boat's a twin diesel, it's very efficient, it's brand-new. It doesn't require any more personnel to operate right now. If there's a boat activation, the crews from Station 1 go immediately, and other crews come in and back them up if needed. This boat is actually a safer boat, it's enclosed, it's heated, it's a bigger boat, it'll flow about 2,500 gallons a minute, and I would hope it would cost us less to own. Now, one of the things that we had in the previous contract was a page of educational stipends. If you remember in the budget, that cost us a tremendous amount of money. Now the stipends in the contract, there's probably two paragraphs that talk about advanced degrees, paramedicine, and that type of thing. And one of them is a 2% stipend for being operated over a boat over 28 feet. Again, a specialty thing, as far as training goes. We have been working very closely with the U.S. Coast Guard, both in this area, and also in our maritime incident response training. We have a tremendous partnership with both our local office in Newcastle, and the captain of the port, out of Portland. They have offered to do a tremendous amount of this training, to bring our personnel up to speed at little or no cost. So as far as tremendous overtime costs and training, we don't anticipate any of that.
Will this boat be in the water, 24, I mean, year round?
Three hundred and sixty-five years, yeah.
At Pesca Park?
Probably at the Port Authority.
Port Authority. You won't have to bring it up, uh, out of the water in winter time?
No, sir.
Under David or anything like that? Okay.
No, sir, just a little background, it's, like I said, it's fully enclosed, it's heated, it's a twin diesel turbojet boat, that's designed to be used, your honor.
We got that surplus, didn't we?
The 83 Seax, yes. That didn't cost the city any money, that was government surplus. And now the engines leak in, and the transom's falling off, and I hope to get the new boat in before this one sinks.
All right, Chief, thank you.
Okay. Okay, other questions or comments? Assistant Mayor.
Thank you, your honor. I, I have a quick question, if you just write that down, then I'll make my comment, and do it all in one shot, so you don't have to listen to me more than once, at this point in the meeting. I note that in FY '06, there is an overtime, 690,000, up over an actual of that year for 616. And it makes for, you know, in that actual expenditure, there was a lot of money expended, and yet, when you go forward, you go from 616,2 to 623,550, 1%, give or take. And I just want to know, if, if you know, what that aberration was, and, and if you could explain that, and that's a fairly simple mechanical question, so I'll just off of my comments at this point as well. I do have to say, you know, hockening to what Counselors Smith and Hines have said, that we have had an inordinately high number of calls. I personally have as well, expressing concerns about quote-unquote "holding the line on the budget," and I would not be honest if I did not tell you that that's what we encounter. That being said, you know, it was fashionable in the last campaign, certainly the last round of budgets, to say that, you know, we want our departments to bring us results, we want our departments to bring us proper analysis, comparative analysis, goals, budgets, of that nature. And that's kind of a new theme in our politics here. Frankly, this is my third presentation that I've sat through of the fire department, and as far as I can tell, you've always done that. And for that, I thank you greatly. I do think you set the tone nicely for doing that kind of work, and I think it's important that wherever we come down as a council, to find what the community can reasonably afford, and what we need for reasonable service, that we appreciate and understand that. And so, when we start trying to save money, it's not that the requests of this department are anything but meritorious, because they certainly are. And we will take that into consideration, and balance that with the, the real concerns we have of the taxpayers who've been contacting us. And I'll just add that with respect to the one position, the inspector position, that we've lost since 2000, probably a casualty of the property tax wars and so forth. You know, if the half-year expenditure works for everybody, that's something I could get behind. Because I think prevention is good, and if we have staffing concerns otherwise, that we're not going to change at this point in time. The more you stop, the better that is on the troops, so. I have nothing further, and I do thank you for a very good presentation. Your honor, I might just, before the chief gives a specific answer on the overtime, I just want to take the opportunity to commend the commission, and the chief, and, and the negotiating team, when they, when negotiating the collective borrowing agreement. One of the things that they did is they looked at the issue of the, the 1996 post-employees. And if, for those that are not aware of it, what happened is, after 1996, all employees were, that would, were hired after that time, no longer could cash out sick time when they retired. So it has huge and substantial savings to the city of Portsmouth from that liability over a 20-year period or a 20-year career. So the commission, working with the Human Resource Department and the, the chief, came up with an idea which was able to be negotiated in the collective borrowing agreement, which basically took a pretty innovative way of looking at it. Prior to the collective borrowing agreement, people would receive a first, you know, probably a five-year employee would get 10 days annual leave and 14 sick days. And if they're hired post-1996, that meant that they were not going to get any payout for that. And so there was an issue relative to the use of that time. So what the commission did, and worked with the union and negotiated, was to basically come up with an earned time type of situation, where that same five-year employee receives 17 days of earned time, and a disability bank of seven days. So before the person can get into the disability bank, they have to use the three days from their earned time. So what that has done consequently is really, basically addressed the post-1996 employee, because basically what we had, and I'm not suggesting that we ever go back to pre-1996, but what we did when we, when we got rid of that major unfunded liability, is we created a two-tiered system within our, in our employees. And so by virtue of doing this, through collective borrowing, again, I've been talking to the council about that, you know, over the next few months, we're going to have to talk about some of those other collective borrowing issues. This is just one area that I think, and I would have to ask the chief how he feels, how this is working, but I suspect that is part of the answer to your question, Assistant Mayor.
I, I see that it is.
Okay, but I would refer to the, just, you want to say something first, long?
Oh, go ahead.
As far as the overtime accounts, call, you noticed that they change from year to year. And the way our budget is set up, and the way we run the budget, and the way Executive Assistant Tracy Freeman monitors the budget, we do projections of what we, we think we're going to spend, and then are adjusted as we go through each pay period. Some are higher, some are lower, depending on the season. But each year, those overtime numbers will change, because if we find there's a savings, we find we're not spending as much, we will back it back. We, it's one of those things with earned time, we don't know how much they're going to take through the year. They don't take all that they have on the books, if they ever did, we couldn't fund it. So it's really difficult to, to budget for worst-case scenario in overtime. Also, the, the callback line. If there's more fires, it, it's higher. We also split out training this year, so we could better track what we spend in overtime, and training for overtime. So those are constantly changing, depending on what we spent, depending what the department history is, and what our suspected liability will be for that. So you won't see $600,000 cold line in the fire department budget coming through by you every year, because we may not need it. So we try to budget to real experiences.
Thanks, Chief. Counselor Panalakos.
Yes, I just have to say that since the time that I've been on this budget, and on this council, this is the hardest budget year I've ever been in. And when you look at a budget, at 83% of it is personnel in this city, or 85, almost, you need to look at everything, and it's not going to get any better next year, next budget session, or the next budget session. And we are really down to brass knuckles right now, because people are calling out there, they're talking to us, and their biggest turnout I've ever seen was the other night, and I've only been here eight years. So I think, I, I just want any department head to, to think that any questions I asked, or the commission, or anything else, it's not against the department, it's just that I am having a very hard time with this budget, and I don't know how we are going to get through this budget without layoffs. And that scares me. And I just have to say that you do a good job of giving us a budget, but the people out there just can't pay anymore. And I, for one, sitting at this table, don't have to worry about how high you put these taxes, because I have an apartment with my daughter, and she pays the bills, so I don't have to worry about it. And I am the one that's very worried about it, because other people out there don't have the opportunity I have. And it's getting bad. People are calling up and saying, we know the police department's good, we know the fire department's good, we know the school department's good, but God, my house is good too, and I can't keep it, because I'm going to have to sell out if you raise my taxes. So I just want everybody to know that.
One thing I would add is, I think one of the goals of the council in general, is realizing that it's not as if this year is a blip, and that next year will be a much easier year. That's, that's not realistic, and if you look at other communities, Nashua may be one high-profile recent example. They have put themselves, and I'm not trying to castigate, but they're in a situation where even by having to make fairly draconian decisions, in some departments in Nashua, they're still going to have a tax increase of about 5%, in part because they have other bills coming due that are not directly affiliated with year-to-year operating expenses. And again, not castigating, not, this is a reality that most municipalities, I would argue, around the country are facing in different forms. And so I think one of the things that we can do as a council, and I think the city manager has done an excellent job up to now, and will continue to along these lines, is to think, as we're making decisions now, about five and 10 years down the line, because it'll, it would be relatively easy for us to do things which would make us look pretty good this year, and, and then next year look a little worse, and then look really bad, probably after most of us have decided we've had enough of being a city counselor. But that wouldn't be our problem anymore. And that's not our job. Our job is to try to see it coming out ahead, and the more time that you try to make gradual improvements and changes, contractual, year-to-year operating and otherwise, the less pain that any department, or any voter, any resident, any taxpayer, any counselor, has to face, as long as you can see it coming way out, and start making gradual changes, and try to be upfront with the department. So, again, I think you've heard it several times, nothing negative, it's, in, in terms of the message being sent, but you've heard it as much as we have, that I would suggest, as we are in a little over an hour now, that I would suggest against doing a straw vote at, I know we've done that in past years. One of the reasons why I would suggest that, I just want to put it out there now, is, as you know, we're looking to try to focus on how much we can spend, as compared to starting with departmental requests and working backwards. And I think that there's generally been a positive response to that process. I think that's where most municipalities are going. If we were to, in effect, lock ourselves in, not statutorily, but publicly, to, here's the package that we as a council are going to support, in this case for the fire department, it could well be, I would hate to be the last department municipal, the fourth work session, because you could see what could easily happen, is you've sort of locked yourself...
Wow.
And, you know, now, then Police Thursday, schools next week, municipal the week after, and all of a sudden, we're sitting around the table going, wow, it didn't seem that bad the first three work sessions, and now we understand why. It's because if we do it, and you see how this is not really the best way to do it, there's, this was done largely, I believe, just because of scheduling, this is the way that we did it. Heck, it's not even alphabetical. We, we, it would be unfair for us to put the final couple of departments in a situation where they're going, jeez, I wish they had held back a little bit and looked at it all in totality, after having had a chance to hear everybody out. So, at least that's what I would recommend, and I, I think that's probably a, perhaps the most prudent course of action.
Just for your, for the council's information, as you're aware, that we do have a work session scheduled, I believe it's June 13th, that would be the final work session on the budget, but that is not as specific for any department, but that would be the final work session. So if, if the council proceeds with the method that the mayor is suggesting, then at that time, we'll be compiling all the notes from the meeting, and we'll kind of let you know where we feel we were hearing the city council, and certainly work with you. That is the 13th? It's the 13th? Okay.
And that's part of the reason why, a little earlier in the meeting, in trying to frame what I've heard in individual conversations, as well as within the meetings, as to what may be the hot points, either for up or down, you know, for each department, and to the extent that we can isolate it, we want to try to minimize uncertainty on your part. We don't want you to be going, well, I have no idea where this council may go. But I think we need to mull over what our peers have said, and think about what you've said as well. And it's the same with all departments. So, but I, I'd like to think that by the end of this, we've got a general idea about some of the points where people may be receptive, and say, if we do have to reduce the request in order to try to get to a neighborhood that we feel taxpayers can afford, here's some of the areas that we consider, and then look in totality, so that we're not zinging one department, or locking ourselves in early in the process. Up, Chief.
If I may, and to address Counselor Panalakos' concern, I've been in the fire service 20 years, and the lady I met on day one was Laura Panalakos, so she doesn't offend me at all. The, and the city council has always supported the fire department, and you supported us, we supported you, and we supported the city. Certainly, the people that you see before you are taxpayers, and we understand the Although, my tax bill comes, and I have to pay it, as a fire chief, I have to tell you what I think the standard of coverage should be in the city. And I understand we're all going to work together for that goal. Now whether that be July 1 or January 1, we're all willing to work together with you on that. It's important to note that it is not a new position, so we're not asking you to approve a position, we're just asking for the funding for that position. So how the fire commission chooses to fill it, or when to fill it, I guess is their decision. So we look for your continued support, and we understand the job you have to do, so.
And last thing I'll say is, and I think mostly the council said this, other departments should not take this as a negative, but rather as a positive, with regard to your department. In my brief time, it's been a classy experience, it's been a positive experience, working with the fire department, even when times are difficult, when you're dealing with numbers, it gets a little tense, but it's been a positive relationship. So, appreciate the, the words that were just said. And I saw a few hands, I saw Counselor Grasso, and anybody on this side? Let me go with Counselor Grasso.
Okay, thank you, your honor. At the joint budget meetings, we were presented with figures that were indisputable, and that the, each department has to deal with. And one was the contract obligations, and another was the retirement, and the health, and the workman's comp. And I think the fire department got hit particularly hard by the percentage that went up in retirement, and I, and workman's comp. But I just thought everyone should know that the, that's based through the state, we have nothing to do with it, we have to fund it. And the retirement percentage did go up quite a bit for the fire department, so that that's reflected in the budget also.
Counselor Panalakos.
Isn't, won't that almost double next year, in the retirement?
The, if I might, your honor, there are some projections out, it won't double, but it, what the projections out, have it going up to, close to, I believe, 20%, if I'm not mistaken, of payroll.
On top of what it is now, right?
It would be, no, it would be the 20%. Right now it is at, what, six? Yeah. So what would happen is it would, but those are just projections. And the retirement board is working on that, and quite frankly, there are a couple of things that have to go into that. Interest rate assumptions that the retirement board has to decide on, and again, as Councillor Grosso said, that's a state retirement board. So if they, you know, decrease the interest rate assumption rapidly, then what will happen is that the rate that will have to be paid for, to actuarially fund the plan will go up.
Less return. We'll begin with less returns, so you don't need to put more principal in.
And every, basically, every plan does an interest rate assumption, so, you know, if you want to be aggressive and use a 9% interest rate assumption, know that it's not going to happen, then your plan won't be fully funded and won't be funded in such a way that's actuarially responsible. But they will have to make that determination. So if they take it down from 8.5% interest rate assumption to 8%, let's say, then what happens is then the amount of money that we have to send to them to keep the plan funded appropriately goes up.
And again, this is where the sooner that we, and I say we as a community, but we had a meeting of mayors about two months ago in Manchester, it was, there was unanimity that this is not just an issue that needs to be discussed and addressed in some manner. It may be the preeminent issue, if you're looking, again, five and 10 years down the road, because what we don't want, I think any municipality, no municipality wants, to put themselves in a position where public employees become so expensive that we can't afford to have public employees. They're a necessary part of a successful community. So we are looking, again, the further down the road we look, and the better we work with state government as well as our fellow municipalities to try to see how we can address this in a way that's fair to both the employee as well as the taxpayer, the sooner we begin that conversation, the less pain that all will have to deal with down the line. So this is one place where I think Portsmouth as well as other communities can be a real leader in making sure that people are aware of this and dealing early on with how we can make a positive difference.
I know it was a big topic and conquered this year, all the way around.
Other, oh, sorry.
No, I just said it's scary.
Scary, yes. Councillor Whitehouse.
Just one question, Chief. Does the supervisors allow shift swap? Say you're on 3 to 11, he wants to go on midnights for a reason, personal reason, and he finds a swap, is that allowed?
Yeah, your shift hours are the police department, but there's day shifts and night shifts, and certainly they are allowed to swap their shifts, yes.
I see. Okay.
Okay. I know that the city manager.
I have something that's more of a housekeeping thing, it doesn't require the fire department to stay. It's just about a two-minute item to give you some information on how the process works so that you're aware. It's the, I have copies of the resolutions from last year, and if we get a couple of minutes, we can just talk about.
Let me just make sure. Any other questions or comments for the good folks from the fire department? Seeing none, really appreciate your time, hope that we provided at least a glimpse of the kind of concerns and questions, and certainly there'll be more discussion between now and the finish line in about a month. So very much appreciate the time.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
What I'm passing around to you now is, for the city council's information. What I'm providing the city council is just a, what we approved last year. So you get an understanding that when you get into the formal meeting in June to approve the entire budget, you'll see, and I'll just go quickly through these. Resolution one basically deals with a resolution that would, the adoption of the fees, which is an addendum to the budget. So that was done a couple of years ago to try to smooth and streamline that. And Councillor Heinz is chairman of the fee committee and provided you all with a copy of memorandum relative to any changes within the fees, and all those fees are outlined in the, in an appendix within your budget. So that's the first thing you're going to see is a resolution. The next thing that you're going to see is resolution number two, which really deals with the operating budget and the whole heart of the budget. And that is where you really need to pay attention to the, to how you're going to proceed. And you might want to utilize this, so for example, it is not like you're going to take an amount and say you're going to reduce it, you're basically going to insert a number that is really going to become law as part of this resolution. So at the end of the day, you'll see that municipal, for ease of discussion, includes also other, all non-operating. So when you look at that municipal plus non-operating is in that resolution, and then you have police, fire, and schools, and then you have the total amount.
So John, if you wanted to separate, the proper motion would be what? How?
You mean separate the four parts of the operating?
I can certainly have the city attorney give you an actual.
Has this been tried before?
Yeah, and again, you certainly can separate out the question, you can divide the question, it's just, it's a Robert's Rules type of thing, and I want to make sure, and we'll take, we'll make a note, and we'll have the city attorney give us an opinion relative to that. And that's why, that's a good question, and that's why I wanted to do it tonight to show you what happened. So you can then.
We did that last year, didn't we? Separate.
I believe you tried to separate the question.
Tried to, but we didn't.
Yeah, I do have a bit of a question regarding that, in the interest of fairness, if Attorney Sullivan comes back with an opinion or an offering in that regard, which I think is a wonderful idea.
Yep.
I do not think there is necessarily a unanimity of opinion on the council as to whether you vote it all in one shot or if you vote it line by line. And my personal opinion is, wherever you stand on that issue, I think it's fairer perhaps to consider having that discussion prior to the final budget meeting, so that motion practice about how you do it doesn't obscure what it is you're trying to do, and that we ought to have that out and have that philosophical discussion. The reason I say that is, you know, there are really good arguments on both sides as to why you should do it, and I just know that last time, that the arguments were interesting, but they were also on the fly, and I don't think people were ready for them, and I think it would be, I think it would just be better if we talked about how we're going to do it beforehand, but I don't know that, I mean, I guess that's an agenda item for the mayor or the city council.
Well, that's a good point. I think one thing is, and, you know, knock on wood, you never know, I think there's a relatively good chance, I think this year's process is even more deliberative than last year. I think, I think we're, you learn every year, you know, how to improve the process, and I think that in part because we can improve even that piece of the process from last year, there's a pretty good chance that prior to that meeting, I think that we would have a pretty good idea, and I think we can work, it may happen organically, but let's maybe make a point so that it doesn't happen just organically.
Well, you know, just to, as a historian, and the mayor should correct me or the city manager if I don't have it right or joke, one of the longer timers. What kind of happened was, we would get to a departmental number by osmosis and straw votes.
Osmosis?
Yeah, okay, look that up now, Merrill. But we kind of, we kind of moved towards those numbers and we kind of, you know, evolved towards them. And the good thing about that was, it got us talking, and that was great. The difficult thing about that is sometimes people reasonably would change their minds. And so expectation becomes an issue. So that becomes, you know, how we evolve towards that number is one thing. Maybe that still happens, I guess, probably does, it's a natural process. But if you don't talk about how you're going to vote it and have that fight prior to the last meeting, I'm a little concerned. One other comment on the process is, to the extent that there are outstanding contracts in issue with various departments, to the extent that they do not get a straw vote, they could make the argument that they don't know what to do. And I just don't quite know how one would handle that.
I don't quite understand you. You mean collective bargaining agreements?
Say, no, let's say a teacher needs to resign, and they need to resign by a certain time, and we don't do a straw vote, which, again, I think it's reasonable not to do a straw vote. But, I mean, how do we bridge that gap in terms of notice and opportunity for people?
That probably will be a question you'd want to ask next Tuesday night of the school board.
One thing I would say along those lines, because that's an important question, is, you know, with, in some ways, the fire department, each department is a different animal. They have different needs, they have different percentages that are people, they have different amounts of retirees, and there's all kinds of things at play. So they're hard to compare between departments in that regard. Part of the reason why probably their percentages may end up different is because they're just very different. I think part of the point there is that it means that, say with the school department, I hope I'm not speaking out of school here, that they may have a little more need to get, if not a straw vote, at least a little more specificity in the direction that we may want to go, so that when they leave, just like every department, I'd like it that every department, even if they don't get a straw vote, has a pretty good idea about the kind of issues that we're likely to grapple with over the next couple of weeks. So in this case, again, it seemed like a couple of the issues that were coming up were with the fire inspector. Full year, half year, not this year. I mean, that's, it's pretty obvious that was one of the pivot points that we need to as a group discuss. Maybe there are one or two others, but if there had been an enormous, just monster in the corner that we couldn't agree on, I think that would be a great example of where, geez, we should probably try to give them a little more direction so they don't get really stuck. The schools, because we're dealing with personnel, that has the potential to be a much, that's a much greater issue, and to the extent that we can get a little more specificity without a straw vote, next Tuesday, there may be some benefit for the reason the assistant mayor is giving. I see two hands, let me go, Councillor Grosso and Councillor Panalakis, and then Councillor Heinz.
Your Honor, perhaps the discussion Tom is speaking about could happen at the June 13 meeting, and I think that that meeting also should be the very final time that we would have to indicate to the school department our feeling on contracts, because if we give them some idea either next week.
Yep.
Or June 13, school is still in session, and they can, you know, get ahold of people that might be still working without a contract for next year, and that might be helpful for them.
Let me, okay, I'm sorry.
Just a comment on that, it won't take long. For example, with the school department, if they come to us and they say, look, we need to promise a very small number of contracts, you can take it on faith that with a $30 million budget, they'll figure out a way.
Right.
If it's an inordinately high number, then we got to roll up our sleeves. But, I mean, we need to know that so that we can make at least, and so if I'm hearing three, that's different than if I'm hearing 35. Sorry.
Councillor Palekows and Councillor Heinz.
I just would hope that through this process, that by the time that we get through each one department, that we will have come to a consensus of what we're going to do or how much we're going to be able to, percentage is going to be, and that we would get to the position where there's not going to be any more hiring in the city of Portsmouth. There's not going to be, you know, we're going to look at cutting this and we're going to look at cutting that, because it, we need, this council needs to get on board and get things together, because this might be a rough year this year, but look at the next year that's coming down the road. We're facing the same problems, and when you get, people say to me, I don't have any insurance, Laura, and when I read in the paper that the city of Portsmouth pays out $8.9 million in insurance, I get very upset because I know it's coming out of my tax dollar. And I used to be able to say, well, a city employee isn't paid as high as a person on the outside is paid, so we give them this benefits. That's not the way anymore. Their pay is up where they is, and the benefits are up there, and people out there aren't happy about it. And I just don't want a teapot out there on Fears Island. With a tax-free vote.
I'm sorry, City Major, I know Councillor Heinz, I saw your hand a moment ago, just want to make sure I hit the loop covered.
Okay. Well, what I was going to say, when we were speaking a little while ago about having a calendar vote on these, two of these, three of these in fact, the fee study committee that come up with a number of fees, those are choice items. If you want the service, you're going to, you individually ask for it. Sewer and water, the amount of water you use dictates those items. So it's a tax, it's a tax, it's a tax, but that becomes a choice tax, which is a lot different than the total tax on your house. So, you know, if you separate those two items out, actually sewer and water together and the fees, you only have one to vote on, the tax property. So it isn't that complicated.
That really is the one, really. That is what we're really discussing. But it's the one.
So if I understand, Your Honor, a couple of things. This is for your use, these are all the resolutions from last year. My understanding is that on June 13, once we've completed all our work sessions, that the city council will have a final work session on the budget. At that time, we will have copies of the resolutions available for you to discuss as how you want them, and by that time, I'll have the city attorney give you an opinion relative to how you can divide the question if you so chose to do that. The other thing is, just to note that we do have a meeting on June 19, and historically we have adopted the budget at those meetings, and you do have another Monday in June, you have the June 26, if you so desire to go to June 26. I would just remind the city council that they need to, in accordance with the charter, adopt the budget by the end of June. If the budget is not adopted by the council, then the budget that's submitted by the city manager becomes law. That's just some housekeeping.
Well, I understand with respect to housekeeping in the budget that you submit, given that certain departmental requests are in excess of a number that would create a budget of, say, 4.3%, give or take, then do you, are you legally empowered at that point in time, if we're all poking each other in the eye, to submit a budget at 4.3%, or do you have to submit with what commissions and departments have provided you and whatever that number is it is?
What I've submitted to you here today is what you would adopt, the number of the total that's in the budget that's being proposed. Now, the likelihood of that happening, I think, is very slim, but the, if that was adopted on June 30, on July 1, I could freeze everything as well. Have the, I have the right to do that in accordance with the charter. So, you know.
But when you, the budget you submit is the departmental budgets, you've made a recommendation, but your recommendation does not carry to the day, it's those submittals.
Basically, what is under the recommendation line of the city manager is what would become.
I'm still confused. For example, if the school department's request is nine and some.
That would be it?
Even if in your comments you say, I think this number is high, that's just, that's a comment at that point.
Right, and so, but I'm just giving you, this is, this is my 10th budget that I've given to the city council, and I've never seen a council that has waited till the end of June to make that. That is something that I don't expect to happen, but I think it's important that you understand what the charter says.
And just so that, for anybody listening, I would, in the individual conversations I've had with, I think, pretty much everybody in the council now over the last week or two, I would say that in general, I don't get the sense of a lot of discord, I certainly don't get the sense that there's wide gaps in where people are. Are there little differences? Yeah, that's why you elect nine people instead of one person. That's a healthy thing. And I would argue, I would say too, that the conversations have been very positive. Nobody's excited in the sense that, no, I don't think any councillor is giddy that we have to make difficult but necessary decisions. But I do get the sense that pretty much everybody in the council is willing and acknowledges that that is a necessary part of the job. So that's the positive part of it to me, is that I don't feel like anybody's looking to shy away from it. Just because you're not excited about it doesn't mean that you don't recognize you have to do it. So I don't think that there's a default within the council and, you know, sometimes you get a public perception that just because it's difficult means that it's nasty. I don't think it's nasty, but it is difficult.
John, you said that if we didn't come up on the 19th for, ready for it, then we do have to the 26th, like we could have another work session.
Well, you can always, right, the mayor can call a meeting anytime he chooses, so we just would have to post it, and so let's say on the 19th, no decision was made, then the mayor could ask for a meeting on the 26th, you could ask for one on the 27th, 28th, 29th. You could ask for one right till the end.
He could. But he's not going to.
I just want you to be aware of your options.
And also ride a pink pig with wings, at any rate.
That's for fundraiser.
John, will these figures change at all? This was given to us as of April 20.
I got to see that. I don't know what document you're holding up.
Your estimate of percentages?
I'd have to take a look at the document you're looking at.
Will that change at all, the latter part of June? I thought that was very interesting, that document you gave us.
No, this is, this document, this is all based on, this is the document I gave you relative to a 4% tax increase, a 5%, 6%. These are just basic numbers that would get you to that, to that level. And just remember that this included the new growth, and then when you go down below, you'll see the actual tax increase. No, it just, it basically tells you what you have to reduce, basically.
Okay. You took into account the new growth and everything?
Yes, the top number is new growth, and then when you, so for example, the first one that says 5%, if you look at the top, then below that is the other number.
Okay, and let's see, anything else? We'll do this again on Thursday evening. Thursday, 6:30?
Yes.
Police budget.
Correct.
There we go. And I think we have, we can chat offline here. Okay, very good.
Okay.
Thank you.